All right. My name is Dave Printy. I'm the host for this meeting. This open meeting of the Northborough Board of Selectment and Interview Committee is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, a town in Northborough has been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends a requirement for open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. All members of the Board of Selectment and Interview Committee are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. This order allows the Board of Selectment and Interview Committee to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless it's sharing notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of this meeting can do so in the Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link on the listed agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will not feature public comment. At this time, I will confirm member access in that they can hear everything that's going on. Select Man Kalen?
Present.
And Select Man Rutan?
Present.
Excellent. Okay, folks, I will. You go ahead, do what you need to do, and you tell me when you're ready for the first one to come in, all right?
Okay, thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Okay.
So I'll make the motion.
Sure.
I make a motion that we accept the interview subcommittee minutes from October 27, 2020.
Do you mean November 10?
Sorry, my bad, November 10.
Okay, I second that. Any discussion at all, or?
Any discussion? Nope, no discussion.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Excellent. Okay, are we ready for the first applicant?
I think we are.
Okay. Chief, could you bring in our first applicant, please?
Will do.
Thank you. Hi, John. You're on mute, though. You're on mute. Awesome.
There we go.
I was a little worried about the sideways. That'll be an interesting interview.
I was gonna ask if you were flying in a plane doing loops.
I'm on my phone. Apparently, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't really.
It's the first time I've gotten queasy during an interview. Actually, that's a lie. That's a lie. I have gotten queasy in interviews before.
Tim, I have that effect on a lot of people.
Well, you're perfect, then. Welcome to the committee.
Hi, John. Leslie Rutan, Board of Selectmen.
And Tim Kalen with the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, thank you very much for being here this evening. Real quickly, how did the wreath sale go for Troop 101?
Good, we, you know, they, they pre-sold about 575 wreaths online ahead of time, so they really didn't have to sell that many this year, which is great. So mostly it was just deliveries because we didn't want the kids going door-to-door. So it was nice to get most of them pre-sold. I think, you know, we like to, when the kids do the work, so there was a little bit more, maybe, mom involvement than we really wanted, but we got the job done.
Yeah, they're beautiful, by the way.
They, you know, the last year, we had, we had some concerns about the quality of the bows, so this year they invested in a couple of bow-making machines to get the bows a little bit better. So.
I did notice a difference, actually. By the way, very pretty.
I'll tell Karen Harris, she'll be happy that the bow investment was worthwhile.
Please tell Karen that, yes, very nice, and the wreath is big, it's beautiful, so thank you very much for all that. That's a big one for us every year. So, okay, do you have an application to serve on the Implementation Committee for the Master Plan? So I wanted to find out a little bit about you and what your background is and why you are applying for this position.
Well, I've lived in Northborough now for, I guess, 2004. Sixteen years, and you know, my kids were younger, and I didn't have as much time, and everything was pretty busy, so I never really had, you know, much time to get involved with town, but over the last year or so, you know, we got involved with this whole thing on Bartlett Street and you know, I've started attending some of the meetings and, you know, it's fun, it's interesting. I think, you know, if you want a good community, you've got to be, you know, part of it. So.
Right, so tell us about yourself for the viewing audience. We have your application, but they don't see it.
Yeah, so I, you know, I, as I said, we moved here in 2004. You know, I've lived in Central Houston since 1993. I lived in Worcester for a long time. I went to medical school at UMass. Then I was a resident at UMass, then I was on staff there, you know, as a trauma surgeon at UMass for 11 years. And then in 2015, I changed jobs. I worked down at Beth Israel now again. I do mostly broken bones and fracture surgery. But, you know, my kids were still heavily involved in the town, and as you know, I'm, you know, involved with the Scouts, and my son goes to Algonquin High School, and, you know, we had a good experience with Northborough, so we didn't really want to move, so I changed jobs, but continued to, you know, be happy to stay in North. So I have two, one of my older daughters graduated from Algonquin now four years ago. She's a senior in college. And my son now is a sophomore at Algonquin, so.
You're going through that interesting time right now with all the school schedules and the logistics of that.
And it's funny, too, you know, like, the things that you don't think that, that are gonna irritate, you know, the kids, like, he has to walk, there's only one way to walk around the school, right? They, you know, they've got people shuttled to go in a given direction. And he told me today, it took him 11 minutes to get from English class to math class because he had to, you know, go in this big, you know, circular.
Because of the one way?
Yeah.
Interesting time for those kids.
Yeah, your life's really difficult. Took you 11 minutes to get the math class. That's not much to complain about.
Yeah. There's not a lot of direct lines in that school, anyway.
Right.
Exactly. Tim, would you want to talk about what you are envisioning with this particular committee and how often it might meet and?
Yeah, I think, um, you know, right now, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's a new committee. You know, we have had these types of committees in the past, but I think the last one was in the mid-'90s, maybe, so it's been a good 20, 25 years since, since we had a committee like this. My, I believe it's gonna meet once a month, probably in the evenings. So we just want to make sure that everybody that's interviewing has, you know, the capacity and the time to meet with these. And also, much like the, the Master Plan Steering Committee, I'm sure with this, we're gonna meet more frequently during certain aspects of the implementation. I don't know if there's gonna be public participation, special sessions, those sorts of things. And again, those would be in the evening. So just to keep that in mind, too. And then as far as what the, the committee itself will be doing, you're being very familiar with the actual master plan and really about prioritizing what the town should focus on first, second, third, within that, that master plan, and then being, working with the various committees to help with implementing. So it's, you know, it'll be, it will be straightforward but complex at the same time.
Yes, I presume it's just purely an advisory committee to the, to the given boards and doesn't really have any, you know, authority in and of itself, but it's, you know, really in an advisory position.
Right, like, I think the best example, or one that I often come back to, is a lot of people in town ask about sidewalks all the time. When are we gonna get sidewalks? Now, the, the, the Master Plan Implementation Committee can pass that on as something for the town to consider. And then the Finance Committee will look at that, lay out the cost, will look at what the tax impact will be, and then residents will make a decision. So it's not, you know, it's not us telling the town what to do. It's just advising which way to go.
Making recommendations.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, you know, an advisory panel for, you know, the various committees and everything.
Yeah.
John, do you have questions about it, and what do you foresee, what would you like to see accomplished on this committee?
Well, you know, I mean, it was hard for me to see exactly. I assumed it was largely just an advisory committee. It doesn't seem to have any, you know, real authority on its own, which is fine, that, you know, that's not what it's there for. You know, I think it's helpful for people in town to have someplace to turn to when they have issues. You know, we've seen some development issues in town and, you know, we got involved in the Bartlett Street thing, but, you know, that's not the only one that's been going on, and I think, you know, we've talked to lots of people in town, and it's nice to have, you know, sort of a, you know, advisory committee like this where people can turn to to say, look, this is important to me. You know, can you bring this forward to the right boards? You know, I think people in town sometimes don't know where to go with, you know, some of their concerns, and you know, helpful for something like this, just so people can have a place to turn to to, you know, let everybody know what's important to them. I think, you know, reading through the master plan itself, it's, you know, it's quite comprehensive in some ways, and in some ways, it's, you know, it's fairly open-ended, which I think is, you know, helpful, and, you know, it's well-written, but it's not, you know, as you say, coming up with the right priority of things and, you know, trying to, you know, make sure that the town moves in the direction that the plan is supposed to be having, and I think are, you know, worthwhile objectives.
Yeah, and just, and just to be, to be clear, the, the master plan has been, that process is completed, so it's, this, this committee isn't a committee for people to come and say, I'm having an issue with new construction in my, my neighborhood. That's, that's not, it's really to take the master plan and how do we implement that plan?
And, you know, the master plan is all available online. I've spent, you know, quite a bit of looking through it and, you know, going through the figures and seeing, you know, the sort of priorities of land use and some of those things. Yeah, that's it. I mean, it's, you know, it's out there. It's already, the master plan's already come up with. This is just, you know, how do you, how do you turn, you know, that document into, you know, action?
Correct. Yep.
Exactly. And that's why it'll be good to have a good makeup of individuals on this committee who bring different perspective and come from a different place. And obviously, I think as time goes on, this whole thing evolves because so many different factors take place in terms of, you know, budget, again, priorities in town. You know, what are people really willing to spend when it comes right down to it? You know, will COVID have an impact on how people view their own budgets at home and how much they want to see their taxes go up? So it's really a very interesting project.
Yeah.
So, do you have any other questions of us? Sorry, we were running a little bit late here.
I had just some practical questions. You know, how often it's gonna meet and, you know, how much time is involved, and what's your timeframe for this? You know, like, I mean, most committees aren't set up for, you know, to run indefinitely, so, you know, was this envisioned as a two-year thing where you're gonna revisit it at two years, or is it, you know, open-ended? I, you know, I wasn't sure what the, you know, what.
My understanding, my, my understanding is that the appointments will be for three years. I don't know, and they'll be staggered. But I don't, to be honest with you, I don't know how long the committee will run for. I think the committee will determine its own life.
Sure. Well, depending on what it is, I assume it will, you know, go as long as it feels like, you know, as long as the Board of Selectmen or the Planning Board or whoever thinks that it's, you know, useful and worthwhile.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep, exactly. So, do you have any other questions of us?
Nope, no questions.
Okay, well, we thank you very much for applying. We have five applicants this evening, and then we have four applicants next week. So it doesn't quite rival the 18 people we interviewed for the Diversity Inclusion Committee, but it's nice, it's a nice amount of people, so. And then we would be bringing motions forward at our next Board of Selectment meeting, which is on December 21st.
Great.
So.
Thank you for interviewing all these people, and good luck with doing what's right for the town. Appreciate it.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Good seeing you.
Take care.
Thank you.
I do have your next interview. I can bring them up whenever you want.
I'm good. Leslie?
I'm good, yeah.
Well, I see the table.
It's a nice office.
I unfortunately have no contact information for any of the of the attendees.
There is a cell number here. Would it be worth maybe texting him?
I can give it a shot. He was, he was in here twice. He actually had two logins, but the one disappeared, and just this one was remaining, so this is what I brought in. There he is.
Oh, good. Okay. Hi, Dario. Hi, you're still on mute.
Is it better?
Yes, I can hear you now.
How about that?
Hi, it's okay. How are you?
Fine, thanks.
Good. I'm Leslie Rutan, Board of Selectmen.
Hi, Dario. I'm Tim Kalen with the Board of Selectmen.
Oh, Tim, hello, Leslie.
Hi, thank you very much for being here this evening. Thank you for applying for this position for the Master Plan Implementation Committee. Thank you.
More than happy to try to help.
If you could tell us about yourself. The audience does not have the advantage of being able to see your application, so if you could tell us about yourself and what your background is.
Okay. Well, I'm a licensed architect in 49 states and about 14 countries. We have had, the firm started in 1994. We've been in Marlboro and now in Northborough since the firm was established. Our company is recognized as the best in the world at media facilities, which are kind of gone by the wayside, but in addition to that, we do a lot of private schools, a ton of master plans, and a fair amount of senior living and multifamily projects. As a matter of fact, today, we just put out a proposal to master plan an entire city and community on the East Coast in the Mid-Atlantic area. It's confidential, but it's, it's about 5,000 acres and close to $16 billion. It's a big project. And then we've done tiny little master plans for simple buildings. So master plans have been a big part of my career. The biggest master plan I ever worked on was in South Vietnam. We had a couple miles of oceanfront property in the South China Sea. And that was a multi-billion dollar project. Now, the firm, we're 10 people. We're here in Northborough. I live in Northborough. I work in Northborough. And figured time to give a little bit back. I don't know how much more you want to know, but that's, that's our company.
Well, it's very impressive. It's, it's great to read through, through this and just to see all of your, where you are registered, as you mentioned. And also all of your professional affiliations having to do with architecture, and then the projects kind of go on and on and on, and they're all over the place, so. Very impressive. Very, very impressive.
When you do, when you do the, the plans overseas, do, when you get done, do you have a free place to stay?
They often will let us stay for free. Yes, they will. It's, it's amazing how many friends you make if you're just kind of fair and honest and do a good job.
Yes, it is.
Really do. We have, I, I love taking my daughter to places and people open their doors at their homes, and it's just, it's magnificent. That part's one of the best byproducts you can get.
Yeah. Yeah, that must be very rewarding.
It's, 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 it is. It's really wonderful that you just be fair and honest, and it goes a long way.
Yeah. Yeah. It's funny how some people don't realize that.
I, if you go to our website, you will, there's probably 100 reference letters on there, and that's one of the consistent comments that it's, it's, it was a sad testament to society. It's kind of a double-edged, double-edged testimonial when one of the things they thought made us unique is that we had integrity. And, you know, that's depressing to think that that made us unique, but at the same time, it was incredibly gratifying that they still wanted that. Thank God.
Yeah.
So that was a big deal, and about three, four years ago, I was asked to be the commencement speaker at my college in Ohio at Kent State. I beat out Kasich. And and I just talked about being honest and how it got us so far as a company. And it really, I mean, we do good work, but I think the bigger deal was telling people the truth, and we turned down tons of work. If you ever go look at the recording of that commencement speech, turned down millions of dollars and ended up getting it anyway.
Yeah.
Because they gave it to us because we were just honest with them, which was quite amazing.
Wow, it says a lot about your character, so that's, that's a great thing to, to hear. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at the master plan on the town website, but what would you like to see accomplished on a committee like this?
I think first, with master planning, we have a pretty simple process. And it really boils down to, in our case, the client's goals, which would be the town. We would want to find out what the town wanted to do, and then we would add our comments and criticism to that to try to get you where you want to be. When it comes to, that's, that's the most important part of a master plan is called the program. And that's where we're defining your needs. So if we sit with the folks that are making the decisions and say, what are we trying to do with the town of Northborough? We want to be bigger than Boston. We want to be a nice New England community. Do we want to be closer to in how we operate? Do we want to focus on the residents, on the taxes, and find out what our goals are, beat that up? And when you establish those, then everything we do should be in an effort to realize those goals. So that's, that's kind of our process, and for me, the first part would be to learn where we are and where we want to go. And if we're guiding where we want to go, I'd be happy to put my two cents in on that.
Tim, could you talk about the meeting, what you envision the meeting structure is going to be and so forth, how often the meeting is held?
Yeah. Right now, I would envision the, the committee meeting once a month in the evenings. And that'll probably be the, the set schedule. And then as we move through the process, I'm sure some special meetings will come up where we meet with the public, meet with other committees. And those will probably be in addition to the once-a-month meetings. You know, if you, if you take a, a look at the website, like, the master plan itself is completed. So that's all up on the website. And what our task is, will be to go through that and prioritize projects and work with the various committees on implementation. So it's really an advisory board or advisory committee. The other boards in town, you know, will be the ultimate decision-maker. So if there's any land use restrictions, the Planning Board will weigh in on that. Any financial concerns of Financial Committee will, you know, meet with on that policy decision to Board of Selectmen and so forth. So that's, that's really what the, the committee is about.
Okay. So, yeah, so that, that makes sense. It's, it's, in typical master plan language, once the master plan is generated, the implementation process boils down to phasing, and phasing is determined based on scope, cost, and schedule. What you have, what you can do, and what your priorities are in getting it done.
Right, yeah. Yeah, I think the, I think one of the, the the biggest differences in that, this is just a guess, but with, with what we're gonna be doing, we have 14,000 different customers or 14,000 different clients, and that's, that's all the residents of the town. So it's not like working with one company, so you gotta listen in, in to all the different opinions that come in as we go through the process, so.
Well, they're priceless, to be honest with you. I mean, I can't tell you how much we learn from our clients and not from the CEOs. But when we get wrenches, and all of a sudden you talk to people who are moving stuff manually from one point to another, when a simple conveyor would make their life better, sometimes the folks at the top have no clue, and that, that input's priceless.
Yeah.
Good or bad. It's just, it's, the more you have, the better, as far as I'm concerned, because it just, it opens your eyes to, to things that you didn't realize were, were a hardship or that people really wanted so bad.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
Right, and I think it'll be an interesting discussion over time, too, with the event of, with COVID and how people view things in terms of their priorities and what they're willing to spend. How much do they want to see their taxes potentially go up as some of these things are recommended for implementation? So it's gonna be, you know, an evolving kind of a thing, depending on what the input is that we receive from the various members on the committee, who hopefully are all coming from a different place and offer different perspectives, so. Do you have any questions of us?
I, I, this, I've never worked with, with a town, so it's, it's, it'll be, I'm sure I'll learn the process. I can't see it being much different than a company with a bunch of shareholders. Our shareholders are people like me, you know, just the folks that live here. And, and I'm sure there'll be different opinions, and I think that's good, and I don't know how all the processes work. Sometimes I get frustrated when I see things that I think should happen, but you don't know why they can't or don't happen. I've watched the, I forget the name of it already, the Wesson, the Smith &amp; Wesson place. And that, well, that's a, that's a big deal on how you go about saving it and how you don't, and what you do to at least save our money, the town's money, so that things don't get worse and cost more. You know, that, that's a really tough one, but I don't know how the town operates, you know, what they can and can't do. So I'm sure there's a lot more regulatory kind of restrictions that stop you from sometimes doing the right thing, because I, I think sometimes you have to cut through some of that to get things done, and, and that's something that I don't know at all about with, with Northborough, and I've worked with many, many towns and cities across the world, from, you know, the biggest in the world to tiny little towns, you know, Anniston, Alabama, and Opa-. tiny little towns, you know, Anniston, Alabama, Olbalika, Ben, Oregon, doesn't matter, all the way to, you know, New York City, Chicago, Beijing, Rio de Janeiro, y- y- you name it, but, um, they're all different and that's the one thing I don't know and I probably should, because it's my town. So, how we operate would be the biggest question and I don't know that and I don't know that you can tell me that now, because you know, it's, it's, maybe you can, I don't, it's, I don't know all the rules and restrictions.
Yeah, that's a, that's a, a, a much bigger conversation. I think that's something that, um, you know, a- a- at one of the, um, the committee meetings will certainly be addressed, because there is a number of things that have to be considered as you go through the decision-making process that,
For sure.
You know, you're, you're required to do and, um, who has input and so forth, so it is, it is a different, a different process.
Well, I've never been the one in charge, so it's pretty easy for me. I'm always the one serving the customer, so that's, that's, that's okay.
Yeah.
The town and, and, uh, my neighbors are the customers.
Yeah.
Well, we have, um, a total of five individuals that, who, uh, we are interviewing this evening and then next week we interview, interview four people. And then we will be, uh, presenting motions at our, uh, next board of selection meeting, which is on December twenty first. So, um, we have a little ways to go yet, but, uh, uh, that's, that's the kind of the stretch that we have here for this, this committee. So.
Okay.
To inform you, so we really appreciate your time and, uh, your interest in applying and taking the time to interview with us this evening.
No problem and, uh, if I'm not on it, you can still call if you got questions.
Wonderful.
Thank you, Dario, it was nice meeting you.
More than welcome, thanks, Tim, thanks, Leslie.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Take care.
Do have two more waiting to queue, you just tell me when you're ready for the next.
Okay. Um.
I'm good.
Okay, I'm ready, are you, Tim?
I am.
Okay. That'd be great, chief.
Coming in now.
Hello.
Hi Fran.
Hi, how are you?
I don't know if it was you I heard say on a meeting that the first thing you say instead of hi is you're on mute.
Yes, that's right, that's right.
As you know, I'm Leslie Rutan, Board of Selectmen.
And Tim Cantlin with the Board of Selectmen.
Good evening, Leslie and Tim. I'm Fran Backstrom, resident seventy-six Cedar Hill Road here in Northborough.
Thank you very much, thank you for, uh, applying and thank you for taking the time to interview with us and we apologize for running behind schedule.
Not a problem.
Evening, by about fifteen minutes, so, um, anyway, if you could, uh, tell us about yourself and your background, since, uh, members of the viewing audience cannot see the application that we have in front of us, if you could talk to us about your background a little bit.
Sure, not a problem at all. Well, um, I have, uh, been in town for thirty-three plus years and I have volunteered in some form or fashion over the course of those thirty-three years. I have been very involved in the planning and the development of our town in the volunteer efforts that I have been participating in. Most recently, obviously, I was part of the Master Plan Steering Committee, which I enjoyed very much over that one and a half year period. Uh, prior to that, I participated in the two thousand and nine zoning bylaw, uh, revisions, which was also a relatively large board with a very diverse group of people, um, trying to steer us into getting rid of piggies and haberdasheries and developing, uh, bylaws for assisted livings and things like that as we evolve. And obvious, and then I was on the Board of Selectmen, I've been on the Council on Aging. I was one of the first members of the, um, Elderly Disabled Taxation Fund Committee. I guess my true claim to fame was that I was part of the Pay As You Throw Program, which was also a, a large group of volunteers, um, where I was the liaison as a selectman, working with, um, residents to try to get us out of a deficit when it came to throwing away our trash and our recycling. And, and here I am tonight, looking to add some, um, of my abilities to the process moving forward to the Master Plan Implementation Committee. I feel like it's a natural progression, because I did participate in the steering committee. So, um, I do think that having a diverse group of views and opinions are important. I'm not a landowner other than the thirteen, thirteen thousand square foot, um, house lot that I sit on. But I think that it's important that there are a variety of different views that are represented on the, the implementation committee.
Thank you, uh, based on your background and, uh, having been on the steering committee, uh, what do you envision or hope to see accomplished, um, on this committee?
Well, I think that the most important thing is to be the guiding force to, for the town staff and, um, departments. Because it is, it is really an advisory, we have professionals in the positions at Town Hall that will have to implement anything that the implementation committee recommends. I do think that we have to have a strong presence from a financial standpoint and as well as a land and development, because those are the two things that make or break a community. And so, um, it really is something that you have to have a way in which everyone can be heard and validated, but understand that it's not a pot that we're all going to grab into and try to pull out of. If I represent one particular, um, vantage point, I can't have it always my way. There's going to be a lot of give and take and compromise, because there's seven different categories and every one of them has several goals and every goal has priorities. So, what is the, what is the, the most important priority? I mean, everything is a priority, so then something still has to take front seat and backseat. So, um, I think it's going to be a daunting task, I think that, but I think it's a, it's something that I'm interested in, obviously, because I've been a part of it in a variety of different ways, but, um, I think it's going to take, you know, a strong, well-rounded, um, seriously committed group of people to help the town staff figure out how we, what we look like in five years, ten years and twenty years.
Tim, did you want to add more to that as far as what, what this committee would be tasked with doing, at least in the short term?
No, I mean, the, the only, you know, to, to Fran's point, I think it's, it's, you need people that, that understand that they're, they've got to put the community before their, the, the individual. I think that's really an important part of this is, is, you know, we all want our own individual things in the, in the master plan, but you really have to put that aside and focus on, um, you know, what's, what's best for the overall community.
And I would hope that consensus was found in the master plan. And that's why it does have many different priorities and many different goals, right? Because that's what the fifteen of us did, we came to consensus and said, this is a well-rounded project. No one thing is more important than another, because without one, you, the other doesn't matter. So, the idea that we have to then, again, it, then, it's not going to grow up in little, you know, little pieces, it's got to grow up in one big swell, or it's not going to work.
Yeah, I want to compliment you on your work on the steering committee. I think it was amazing, uh, really how you gathered input from people, I was able to go to the, most of those sessions and I, my fondest memory is of the very first one, which I think was at the middle school. Right, when we used the clickers for the, uh, you know, just, it got everybody involved, people were excited. Um, I loved the one, the, the high school, I think it was great that you, you really, really worked hard to make sure that you were reaching out and that way people couldn't say they weren't at least asked.
That's right, I mean, it was with anything else, I mean, there's opportunity for people to participate in every public forum and, um, the idea that we are a, a town of fourteen thousand people, of which at least nine thousand of them are adults, or, you know, voting age, age adults. It should be what you want it to be, right? But to Tim's point, with concession, right? This isn't Franville or Leslie Town. So, or Timville.
Not yet, not yet.
So, I mean, again, I, I would love to participate, I'd love to carry forward what has hap, gone, you know, to this point. I, you know, I just think that, you know, it's a really a worthwhile effort. I've worked on the large boards before, so I know how to be a player. Um, I'm not looking to, um, you know, take over anything, I just really think that I can parti- continue the participation, at least for the first year, to help transition from steering into implementation.
Well, you have a fabulous background and you've done a lot of work for the community, we really appreciate it.
Well, thanks, what else am I going to do?
While you're doing a lot. We appreciate it.
Well, thank you, thank you. Well, and if you need anything else, I mean, you know where I am, but, um, I welcome the opportunity. And I thank you for your service, I know what you're doing is not, um, you know, sometimes the thankless task as well, but I do appreciate the, the fact that you guys are on the Board of Selectmen, carrying forward.
We appreciate that.
Thank you, Fran.
Um, so we have two more individuals to interview this evening and then next week we have four. So, um, at, at the end of next week's session, we'll be deliberating and picking the six individuals, uh, from the community. Um, the other members will be liaisons for, representatives from their own board, so. Um, and then we'll make a motion at our next board of selection meeting, which is December twenty first.
Okay, so you're hoping that this will start in Jul- in January of twenty twenty-one, right?
Yeah.
The committee will head up, okay? Well, that's good, I mean, that's a good time, good time to start something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Have any questions of us, Fran?
Um, no, not really, I mean, I, I, you know, no, I think that, um, the fifteen member is, is a, is a good number. And, and, no, I think that I'm all set.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, though.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Fran.
All right, you guys have a good night, thank you. Bye-bye.
See ya.
And your last two candidates are in the waiting room. I'm good whenever you are, Leslie.
Okay. Okay, yes, okay, I'm ready. Hi, Jane. Hi, Jane. Can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you now, yes. Hi, Jane, Leslie Rutan, Board of Selectmen.
And Tim Cantlin with the Board of Selectmen. I don't believe she, she has no audio. She can't hear you, but you can hear her.
Oh, that's not good.
She just disappeared, so wait and see if she comes back in.
Okay. So, you said she could hear us, but we couldn't, okay, oh, good.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Hi, Jane.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry. Had to test before I get on, yeah, but the audio is working.
Can you hear us?
Yes, perfectly, are you both?
Wonderful, good, how are you?
Thank you.
Good, good, trying to stay healthy.
Yes.
Yeah, insane, I'm trying to say healthy and sane, I don't know if they can coexist, though.
Yes. Equally important. So, thank you very much for applying for this position, um, if you could tell us about yourself and your background of people in the audience don't know, necessarily, because they don't have your application in front of them, so if you could tell us about yourself.
Sure, um, I am a twenty-year resident of Northborough, I've been interested in open space and, uh, walkable, bikeable communities, as well as, um, as well as preserving our historical heritage and our natural heritage, um, to the extent feasible. And those efforts are something that I kind of did early on when I first moved to Northborough and have, um, lately, you know, found the space and time to get back involved in town politics and town efforts. And I think, you know, I've always avoided town politics, because I didn't want it to, to get into, you know, anything friction, for, you know, that, that created friction with neighbors and that kind of thing. Um, and I just think like, especially when it comes to issues of site planning and, um, you know, uh, the different boards and jurisdictions of our town, you know, it feels like we, we don't, we, we get into a lot of, uh, I, I would say confusion and maybe, you know, not, not feeling like we're not getting hurt or we're not getting good, um, good results from some of our, you know, pretty impactful projects here in town. And what I would love to see this master planning brilliant document, really, that's been put together, what I would love to see is the, in the fruition is, um, that next phase is to really, uh, it, it removes some of those, those barriers and perhaps overlapping, overlapping jurisdictions when it comes to how we plan, how we redevelop and instead like build positively, you know, build, build things that the community is really behind and has real, you know, sees, sees the benefit of, not just the cost of. And I'm that kind of person, I like to build, you know, I like to build positive uh, relations and, you know, um, create new possibilities and, you know, sometimes low-tech, low-cost, but, you know, kind of great outcomes that, um, we can do when we're ripping things down and rebuilding, we have the opportunity to, you know, make different decisions. So, that's where I think, you know, if we are with this master plan, we're looking at the future, we're looking at what we do as we build out and I think there's just great opportunity there to do it sustainably, um, do it with less impact, do it really wisely and build a great, uh, but you have a better town even for, for our children and their, their children.
So, what, what would you, do you have any visions as far as what you would like to see actually accomplished, let's say, within the first year of this?
I, I think that my read on the document is that we are very focused on our downtown and we have a lot of issues in, you know, the very center of Northborough. Um, we have a lot of municipal buildings and we have a lot of, um, room to, uh, rebuild in and, and perhaps, you know, in, in the process, just be looking for those opportunities to actualize some of the goals and, um, of the master plan. And, you know, just have some ah-hahs about while doing this, why not, you know, interconnect some of these properties, you know, get, um, make more recreational and, you know, green space opportunities, historical views and scenic views. You know, that we, we kind of lose them in the, the hodgepodge, um, the, the way that we've just, our town has turned out and, you know, it's, it's a beautiful town, but it's also a very ugly town and I'd just like to see it, the balance change and for it also to become a much more functional, attractive, like vibrant, great businesses locating here. You know, I look to, I look to Hudson, I look to downtown Marlboro and they've both come back in really interesting and, and quite beautiful ways. Um, so I'm just interested at, like, what, what did they do, how did they do that? And I think even to look at our local examples of other municipalities and cities, how they have, um, really hit that very well, uh, could be a good first step for Northborough, for those case studies.
That's actually a good point, that's an interesting point that you make. As far as meeting with maybe people over there who are partly responsible for some of the planning or the development of that and, and why did they make those choices? And do they regret any of those choices? That might be interesting to find out too, is there something that we see that, wow, that looks great, that they would say, gee, I, we were really hoping for something different, but it's okay, you know, for whatever reason, uh, even traffic flow or, um, you know, just how the downtown blocks look, but, you know, that's a good point. That's a good point. Tim, is there anything you'd like to add about the formation of the committee or what, what you envision happening and how often it would need and so forth?
Uh, it sounds from what I've heard Fran Backstrom describe, uh, it as just a, a very heavy lifting, you know, uh, it's going to be a very active committee with really deep You know, it's going to be a very active committee with really deep involvement and weighty projects. So, you know, I can see it taking substantial amounts of time for members of the committee to to form subcommittees, to, you know, be working on various aspects of it. So, you know, that's something that I would go into it knowing, you know, I was ready to do that kind of heavy lifting.
Yeah, yeah. I think it's, you know, to your point, it's, to start with, it'll probably be, we'll have a set schedule of meetings, and then as we start to dig in, I'm sure there'll be special meetings, whether that's with the public or with other committees in town, other boards in town. But as we get into it, I think that, as you said, the lifting will get heavier. But also to your point, I think it's an exciting opportunity to be involved in what the future of our town's going to look like, so.
Yeah, and feel like and operate like and, you know, how attractive and retentive it will be. You know, we could hold, we could be even, you know, a better place to live and a healthier place to live based on the decisions we make today. And we could, you know, we have kind of a flight of people over a certain age who say, well, we're going to sell and move out of town because, you know, their kids are raised or we have kids who don't want to live here when they're 20, 25. And, and I think they are, I think there's a different demographic in Hudson, certainly, where there are more young people there and, you know, they look like they're having a great time, you know, visiting restaurants and cafes and have a nightlife. It's, it's fun. It's like, it's a place to just hang out, go for an afternoon and walk around and take your bike and go on the bike trail. And you know what I mean? It's just got a lot of great assets to it now.
Yep, that's another great point about kids. I think that Northborough doesn't seem to be able to retain a lot of it, the kids who graduate from here. They seem to either move away or move nearby because they can't maybe afford to live here or there isn't enough to do, that kind of thing. I do agree with you. I think Hudson seems to be a little bit more of a center in terms of being able to retain some younger people, which I would love to see happen, certainly.
It wasn't 10 years ago. It was a very different place. So they really, they put money into the bones and they really built it from the ground up, I think, in, you know, ways that worked with the architecture and with, you know, the basic assets. They didn't have to knock down a whole lot. They were just able to capitalize on the good structure they had.
I agree. It's a great spot. Do you have any questions of us? Anything else you'd like to add?
No, I think, you know, I just think that the report, you know, what the town created in the master plan is just fabulous and really well thought out. I think it's a great blueprint for what's to come. And I just know how hard it is for us to get, you know, to get everyone working in the same direction and to build those bridges instead of build, you know, divisiveness over, you know, that's not my idea, mine is this and that kind of thing. So I would just love to see us do what I think happened with the town common where people came together. And it was like, wow, we're going to take out this ugly strip. We're actually going to put in something that's nice and functional and a gathering spot that we never had before. And, you know, I just see this like potential growing for, you know, this ring of the downtown area that could kind of combine those kinds of open space assets and commercial assets and, you know, nice brick buildings and, you know, there's, we need visionaries, I think, to really make it. And I do, you know, in my, in my own, you know, looking around, I despair sometimes at how we've built and how, you know, beautiful views and, you know, waterways and everything were just blocked that because we weren't considering at the time, you know, what are the scenic values here? And what is the potential for eventually having a, just a downtown promenade or, you know, I don't know, just a flow, a circuit, a river walk, something like that. So I think some, that's kind of a blocked opportunity, but maybe building into the future, we have the opportunity to say, while doing this, let's consider use.
Exactly. Okay. Well, we have another interview this evening, and then we have four more next week. And then we'll be deliberating on the six members that we'll be taking from the community. And then the, there are the people who have a representative from their board. And then we'll be making a motion at our next Board of Selectment meeting on December 21st.
Great. Well, thank you again for all this interviewing you're doing. It's very kind of you both.
Full-time job now. So many great people we're interviewing, getting to know people, which is very nice.
Yeah, it is nice.
Very nice. So, but thank you very much for taking the time.
Yes, thank you both.
Thank you, Gina. It was good seeing you again.
Good to see you. Good night.
Have a good one.
Take care.
And whenever you're ready, Mr. Campbell's in the waiting room.
It would have been 6:45. Oh, boy. Yeah.
I'm good when you are.
Okay, I'm ready. We'll try and get Mr. Campbell out in here in 10 minutes. Looks like he's frozen, actually. John, are you frozen?
Now I'm on mute. Can you hear me, Leslie?
I can hear you and I can see you, but you're frozen. I hear, yeah. Can you?
No, I'm not. I'm frozen. Can you see me?
Yes. You're frozen again. We can hear you, but it's a still shot. Let's put it that way.
I wonder if my, can you hear me now?
Yes, we hear you. Yep.
I'm going to log out and log in.
Okay. Yeah, take your time.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Can you hear us okay?
I'll log out and log back in.
Okay.
I can hear you. Give me 30 seconds. I'm going to log out and then.
Okay.
I'm back. Can you see me and hear me?
Yes, that's much better. Okay, it's no longer a still portrait. And we can.
Nice to see you, Leslie.
Nice to see you, too. Nice to see you, too. And this is Tim Kaelin.
Hi, John. How you doing?
Hi, Tim. Good to see you as well.
Sorry we're running late. We had some little difficulties at the very beginning, so it kind of pushed everything back. We apologize.
I understand. No problem. I've got plenty to do.
So thank you very much for applying for this position for the Implementation Committee, for the master plan. For the benefit of the viewing audience, if you could tell us about yourself, since they don't have the benefit of your application.
Sure. Well, I've been a resident of Northborough since 1995. I remember what it looked like then. I see what it looks like now. We've had a lot of change, a lot of growth. I've always liked to be very much involved in town, starting with activities for my young children, who are now adult children and further along became involved in the Open Space Committee and ultimately with the Community Preservation Committee. And in fact, was a principal in getting the CPA on the town ballot in 2004 and helping to get that passed. And that's been part of my passion in town, is working with that committee and seeing that the CPA provides a benefit for Northborough, which it has in many visible spots. And so I felt like I could be of great value to the Implementation Committee. The CPA will be instrumental in funding many of its initiatives. And it overlaps a lot of the work with the committees that I'm in now, and therefore I thought I'd be a good fit.
Well, we thank you for your work with the Community Preservation Committee. I know you've been on that, as you said, since 2005. And have you been chair for most of that time?
I've been chair for the whole time. I was elected and cannot get out of it, so I'm happy to keep serving that way.
I kind of missed my opportunity this year at one of our selectmen's meetings, make a big deal about the fact that you are still chair. So it's very impressive.
Thank you for doing it now. And I missed having the meeting, too. I enjoy that.
Yeah. Yeah. So we really appreciate that. You've been very involved and congratulations. And the CPA is terrific. That's a huge endeavor for the state. And I think it's great what our town has done with it and how it's been managed with all the various projects in town. And you make a good point about the master plan, with that being a component of that as well, moving into the future. So that's wonderful. Why did you, why did you apply? What is your interest in applying for this particular committee?
Well, I'm going to confess, I almost didn't apply. There's a part of me that feels like I served too long sometimes. There's a part of me that feels like the town is looking for newer faces. And I actually thought about that a bunch. I looked for some outside advice. And I convinced myself to apply that my experience would be valuable. And I feel like I work well among committee members. And I've also felt a strong need that we need to collaborate more as a town, among our town boards and among our town citizens. And so rather than stay on the sidelines, I thought it would be a good idea to get involved.
Do you feel that your work schedule and other meetings that you have in the evening, would that work? Do you think to throw this in there? I don't know. Tim, you think you would be meeting once a month in the evenings? At least at the beginning?
Yeah, probably once a month at the beginning. And then as we start to dig in, there's, you know, obviously going to be special meetings and public input and probably meetings with other committees in town and so forth. So it's, you know, the time commitment could be more at different points over the course of the life of the committee.
Sure. I don't think that would be an undue burden. The committees I serve on now, the Open Space Committee, does not necessarily meet every month. We used to average more like every two months, although we've been very active in the last half a year on the approving of the Open Space Plan, which just got completed. The Committee Preservation Committee also does not meet through the full year. Typically, three to six meetings through the fall and winter to present the warrant for the articles that we want to bring forward. So the additional meeting time, I don't think it'd be a burden for me, although my work schedule sometimes is busy and I do sometimes travel. There's been very little of that this year, so not quite as hard. But I don't have any problem fitting it in.
What would you like to see accomplished in the first year, based on the master plan and what, you know, the seven different areas and so forth? What do you envision happening and something that can be achieved?
Well, my wish would be anything concrete, meaning less furthering of plans and studies and more visible actions on the most important short-term items. And that comes from my impatience in general and impatience with town process. But at the same time, I've learned to temper it, where we can't always jump at things. We have to follow proper procedure and proper protocols. So if there's a balance there and if there's a way to achieve something visible, then that would be my goal. I don't know where exactly that could occur, possibly in some of the town beautification and economic development areas. Whereas longer-term things such as housing creation or, you know, park creation and those kinds of things may take more time to get funding. There's several near-term requests from town citizens that came up in the Open Space and Rec Plan Review. So, you know, people want pickleball. How fast can you get one of those built? People want a dog park, which has been coming up again and again. People want to see more connection of town spaces, more walkability, more bike paths. So those are visible things that I've had some involvement in that might be achievable or at least to make some progress on.
All right, those are good points. Tim, is there anything else you want to add about the meeting structure or anything like that? I mean, a lot of it is undetermined, I guess. It's mostly just kind of settling in on when to start and.
Yeah, I think it's a lot of the nuts and bolts of it will probably be decided in the first couple of meetings that we have, how we're going to move forward and schedules and so forth, you know, it's. So I think we'll have a much better understanding when, you know, come January.
Do you envision the subcommittees being formed or not necessarily? Do you feel like that's the kind of thing that will all just evolve as you feel the members feel the need to meet separately or?
I don't, I don't know. I don't, I don't, it's possible. I don't think so, but it's possible.
Yeah. Sometimes those are good and bad. Sometimes it just makes it too complicated to kind of keep it reined in. And the communication aspect of that can be, make it more complicated. But, yeah, okay. I didn't know if that's something that you envisioned. Do you have any questions of us, John, as far as the committee or the work?
Well, touching on what you were just speaking about, what do you see as the vision for how the committee works effectively among, well, to achieve its goals and effectively among other town boards? That would be where I see it can be both a challenge and effective. But, you know, for instance, where a particular initiative needs another board's approval or where it has to come up on that agenda, you know, how do you see that taking place? Who directs that action, you know, I guess, other than the committee chairman?
Yeah, I think, I think that's why this process that Leslie and I are going through right now, interviewing everybody and getting people with experience, people that have, that care about the community, people that understand that they need to put the community first before their own individual visions. And I think once we have a good, solid committee, then I think it will be easier to collaborate with the various boards and committees in town. You know, you're going to have representatives from those different committees on the Implementation Committee, too, so you'll be able to build a relationship with those people as we work through the process.
And actually, John, that's a good point because a lot of it is timing, you know, things come up and recommendations come up. How do we, you know, what's the timing going to be as far as getting, and I would say, the CPC agenda so that it gets discussed in time for it potentially to be a Warren article and then da-da-da. I mean, things have to be, you know, timed and communicated and on different agendas at the right time. So that's a coordination, too. Yeah.
Well, further to that point, do you see the committee with the Board of Selectmen in collaboration, having the ability to take action on certain things as opposed to bringing everything to town meeting? You know, hopefully because the master plan's been created with a collaborative effort and you have certain initiatives that have been spelled out, hopefully some of those can be acted upon because there's, you know, there's an agreed-upon plan rather than saying, well, we think we want to put some funding here and let's go to town meeting and talk about it. Do you see that being allowed? Because it would be awfully time-consuming going to town meeting and then re-debating everything over again, whereas you feel like now you have a master plan that you should be able to act on.
I think that's going to be dependent on what we're discussing. I think for the most part, most of the items will have to go through town meeting to get the approval because there's, you know, any financial considerations are going to have to be approved. So like the master plan itself as a document is just a giant recommendation. You know, there's no commitment or allocation of resources within that.
Right. But who knows, there could be some some components of it that don't necessarily require town meeting action. You know, it could be just approval by the board of selectmen based on the recommendations. It's hard to say. I think it does depend on what it what exactly is being discussed. But I agree with you, John. It'd be nice if not every single, gosh, John town meeting, because there's so many different aspects to the master plan that it would take twenty years to.
Yeah, if there's if there's certain, if there's certain projects that purview of one specific committee and they have in their budget already approved to allocate funds to that project, then we could just probably go before that committee, get their approval, they allocate the funds they have available to that project, then we move forward. You know, I could see, you know, depending on what what types of of projects we're talking about. Other projects, if, you know, I've been using sidewalks as an example, if the implementation committee decided that sidewalks were a priority, you know, that obviously has to go before various boards, various committees and before the town, because that's going to be, you know, a significant financial commitment that will impact the town's finances, tax rates, all that other o- other things that go into it, so.
It might be interesting to call out the aspects that don't require town meeting approval, just to see what, you know, what they are. It might be an interesting grid to put together in terms of trying to get something visible, as John mentioned, something visibly done. What can we work on that, you know, we can really move on?
Well, just as an example, when when occasions have come up where there's a need for professional services, an appraisal, or even a study at a small level, we've been able to draw on the administrative account of the CPA as allowed by law, where that usually the the CPC would vote on it, of course, but it's, you know, it's not a, it's not a major capital commitment. So that can be approved and can advance something that in turn would lead to a a bigger article, of course. And then another example, we we've used the conservation fund, which holds money for purposes of both land acquisition or pursuit of same or maintenance or preservation of a particular piece of land. Those are just examples where we could further a particular initiative without necessarily having to draw on a larger capital resource or town vote, but.
Right, yeah.
So it could be, you know, yeah, I mean, I I could contribute some help there and some creativity, some liaison with the CPC and so on.
Yeah, that's super, yeah. Those are good points. And I think that would be a great first project to see what 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 can be done sooner rather than later. What what requires, you know, that formal town meeting vote and what doesn't? And does that determine the direction that the committee even wants to take, just in terms of trying to get something accomplished in the short term? I don't know, just throwing that out there.
Sure.
But so, yeah, so is it, do you have any other questions for us? We we apologize again for running late, but we want to make sure that you you know, talk about your background enough and so forth, and what you're able to offer.
I appreciate the opportunity. You you've helped with questions I had. I think I have a good understanding of it. So thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for applying and thank you very much for the time you took to interview.
You're welcome. Great to see both of you.
Thanks.
Thank you, John. Good seeing you.
Take care.
Okay, folks, whenever you're ready, we can do you need to adjourn?
Yes, I guess we're finished. That was the last applicant.
It was.
Yeah, we, John Wickstead, Dario Damare, Fran Backstrom, Gene Cahill, and John Campbell. So I think we're good for this week. And then next week we have four more.
Yep.
So, okay, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
No discussion.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Yep. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks so much, Chief.
Hey, guys, take care. Bye bye.
Take care. Thank you.